And good evening once again. I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our second meeting of the month of October. Another beautiful fall day here in Richmond, Virginia. What are we looking at tonight? Well, we start off with 24 items on the consent agenda. We have six appointments and six items on the regular agenda, and as usual, bunches of changes will be taking place. So let's go down through the agendas right now. We'll let you know what will and won't be heard tonight. Let's start off with item number one. So ordinance number 2012-16, this is amending and reordaining Chapter Two, et cetera, adding a new division for establishing a Citizens Advisory Commission on Alternatives to Incarceration. That paper is being continued until November 26th. Item number two, ordinance 2012-29, special use permit at 122 Tempsford Lane. That one's been continued until November 12th. That'll be our next regularly scheduled meeting. Item three, ordinance number 2012-64, and that one is being continued until the 26th of November. And that one's concerning approval of certain contracts, et cetera. Anyhow, that's going to be continued for another four weeks. Item number four, ordinance 2012-141, amended on reordaining sections of the city code. And this would add a new section for the purpose of establishing a derelict building abatement program, and that's being continued until November 26th. Item number five, this declares a public necessity and authorizes the acquisition by gift purchase condemnation or otherwise of 6,001 and 6,007 Hall Street Road for the purpose of realignment of Hall Street Road, Hay Road, and Derwent Road. Item number six, this is transferring $2,651,986 from the fiscal year general fund budget and $396,000 from fiscal year 2012-13 Department of Public Utilities Stores Internal Services budget. This would appropriate such transferred funds as a total of a little over $3 million to the Boulevard redevelopment preparation project. Now, that is being moved to the regular agenda. And what that is, that's for the purpose of relocating city departments from locations owned by the city along the Boulevard to a location the city plans to acquire, and that's on Commerce Road, at 1638, 1650, and 1700 Commerce Road. That's going to be moved from consent agenda to regular agenda. Item number five, ordinance two, or number eight, rather, ordinance 2012-181, this is installing road boulevards within the public right-of-way on Monument Avenue along the property line of 2813 Monumental Avenue. That one stays on consent agenda. Item number nine, ordinance 2012-182, this authorizes the chief administrative officer, the CAO, to accept funds, the amounts of $44,926 from Virginia Department of Energy Management and $2,364.50 from the Department of Public Utilities. It comes out to a total of $47,290.50 to the fiscal year special fund budget, increases estimated revenues, and gives them the purpose of expanding the city's integrated flood observation and warning system. That stays on consent. Item number 10, ordinance 2012-183, authorizing for and behalf of the city of Richmond, construction agreement between the city of Richmond and CSX Transportation for the purpose of obtaining access to railroad property and right-of-way. This is so they can make repairs to a portion of the Manchester Bridge over the CSX Transportation Railroad tracks and right-of-way. Now, items 11, 12, 13, and 14, all basically the same overall papers. What this does, it's authorizing on behalf of the city of Richmond, a standard project administration agreement between the city and VDOT for the development and administration of certain revenue-sharing projects. What this is, it's $6,350,000 from the city, which has already been budgeted, and that would be matched by VDOT funds of $6,350,000. This would give money for various transportation projects. And so that's items number 11, 12, 13, and 14. They basically all say pretty much the same thing, just various different projects are listed in the various papers. Okay, let's get to number 15. That is ordinance number 2012-190, and this authorizes the CAO to accept $28,650 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles and appropriate the increase to the fiscal year 2012-13 special fund budget. And this is the increasing estimated revenues, and the amount will go to the Department of Police for purposes of conducting traffic safety initiatives in the city. Item number 16, authorizing the CAO for and on behalf of the city to execute an agreement to sublease between Richmond Redevelopment Housing as subleasing and the city of Richmond as subleasing for the purpose of providing office space, storage space, and programming space for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities at 1209 Admiral Street. That stays on consent agenda as well. Now, we get to item 17, ordinance 2012-192, this is concerning a business license incentive program for qualifying businesses for the purpose of exempting new businesses that locate within the city from paying business, professional, and occupational license taxes for a period not to exceed two years. That's been continued as well to the 26th of November. Item 18, and this is a long one. This is ordinance number 2012-193, and instead of just reading it, it has been continued until the 12th of November. Now, we'll get to item number 19, ordinance 2012-194, and this is executing a funding agreement between the city and the school board of the city for providing funds for the school board to lease property at 2395 Hermitage Road for use as a storage facility for various functions relocated from the facilities on the Boulevard. That has been moved to the regular agenda. Item 20, and this is Resolution 2012-R43, and this is providing for an expedited process for their viewing of resolutions approving certain contracts. That goes on the continuation list until the 26th of November. Item 21, Resolution 2012-R130, supporting the official designation of the East Coast Greenway along its route through the city of Richmond and the installation of route signage for East Coast Greenway through the city. That stays on consent. Item 22, Resolution 2012-R131, supporting the application for an allocation of $10 million through VDOT Revenue Sharing Program to provide maintenance and construction assistance to certain transportation projects. That stays on consent. Item 23, now this one is Resolution 2012-R132, patron by Mr. Hilbert. This is to express the council's opposition to the ballot question placed on the November 6, 2012, general election ballot by the 2012 Virginia Acts concerning changes to the Bill of Rights set forth in the Constitution of Virginia that limit the exercise of the power of eminent domain by the Commonwealth, localities, and other governmental organizations. And it's basically encouraging all voters to vote no on this ballot question. And Mr. Hilbert has said he will be giving a more broad explanation of what this paper is meant to be, and he'll be doing that as they talk about the consent agenda tonight. That stays on consent. And also, item number 24, last item on consent agenda, Resolution 2012-133, and this is requesting the CAO to work with the city council, Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce, and members of the Richmond community to propose a location for the establishment of a defense production and support services zone within the city for a pilot program to assess the potential fiscal impact, effects, and benefits of establishing defense production and support service zones with the city. That stays on consent agenda. Now, appointments and reappointments. We'll go down through those rather quickly. Number 25, appoints Robert J. Adams, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Item 26, Regina Chaney, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Item number 27, appointing Lee D. Householder, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Number 28, appointing Joyce M. Knight, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Number 29, appointing Monique Johnson, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. And number 30, appointing G. Andrew Nee as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. And those terms would commence upon adoption of this resolution. They would terminate upon the completion of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board's duties. So those are the appointments and reappointments. They're all appointments, so those six members must be here tonight to be appointed. Now, let's get to the regular agenda. Item number 31, ordinance number 2012-4, and this adopts a process to be followed to ensure funding for the 1% for art program to be administered by the Public Art Commission. This has been continued until November 26th. Item number 32, ordinance 2012-174, declaring a public necessity, authorizing the acquisition of properties known at 1638, 1650, and 1700 Commercial Road, or Commerce Road, for the purpose of housing the Department of Public Works Division of Fleet Management. That's part of that move from the Boulevard. Item 33, necessity for acquisition of property on Westbrook Road. That one has been withdrawn. That was for the purpose of housing facility management functions for the school board of the city. That paper withdrawn. Item 34, transferring funds, and that would be to appropriate such transferred funds in the amount of $5,747,986 to the Boulevard redevelopment preparation project. That paper withdrawn. Item number 35, ordinance 2012-188, and that's for the purpose of imposing a moratorium on acceptance of applications from nonprofit organizations for exemption from real or tangible personal property taxation. That's been continued till November 26th. And finally, item number 36, and this is amending the appendix of city code by adding therein new fees for the purpose of permitting sidewalk cafes within the public sidewalk and excluding sidewalk cafes from the general encroachment provisions. That one's been continued till our next meeting on November 12th. So what do we end up with on the agenda tonight? Let's take a look. We started out with 24 items. On the consent, six items have been continued. Two have been moved to the regular. For the appointments, there's no change. All six items stay on the appointments. For the regular, we had six items originally, while three are being continued, two withdrawn, two moved from the consent agenda. So what do we end up with now? We have 16 items left on the consent agenda. We have six appointments and reappointments, and we have three items on the regular agenda for tonight. Now, awards and presentations, let's take a look at that. We got Mr. Walter Bruce Bullington, and he'll be receiving a joint government public service award, recognizing, honoring, and celebrating his more than 39 years of public government service, working for the Richmond Department of Police Division of Emergency Communications. We also have John Rupp will be accepting an award for the designation, actually, his designation of November as Richmond Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And item number three on the awards and presentations to be received by the Richmond Department of Social Services for naming November Richmond Adoption and Awareness Month. So those are the awards and presentations. Citizens' Comment Period, eight people speaking tonight, and they are Chris Dorsey, Bishop Arthur West, L. Shirley Harvey, Marie Morton Hart, Donald Hatcher, Angela M. Baskerville, Craig West, and Theodore Param. They'll be all speaking on what is going to be going on in their minds and what's going to be addressing the Richmond City Council tonight. So that's the way it looks. We'll be getting started in just a couple of minutes. I'm Dick Harmon. Stay tuned.
I ask the members of council to please take their seats. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the meeting will now come to order. At this time, we will stand, and the invocation will be given by the Reverend Ruth Kroll from the 10th Street Baptist Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. We gather together this evening with thankful hearts and sound minds. We come realizing that we cannot do nothing on our own. So prayerfully, we seek guidance and directions so that we can make good and sound decisions for the benefit of the people of the city of Richmond, Virginia. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds. At this time, the chamber emergency evacuation plan announcement will be given by the clerk.
Council evacuation announcement. Upon activation of the emergency alarm systems, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right in front of the council chambers, or the east or west stairwell outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, Eighth, and Ninth Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors while exiting the building.
Madam President, I believe we have the majority of the members present. I'm looking for Mr. Jewell.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And before we go to read the appointments tonight, I'd just like to make a short announcement. It starts out with the T-shirt, Redskins are going to come behind the science museum. I'd like to thank, get your tickets now, I'm just kidding. I'd like to thank Bruce Allen, the general manager of the Redskins, Mike Frazier, who served on the task force, Peter Bernard, who's with Bonse Coors, who is a sponsor, and all the public and private sector people who worked so hard to put this together so that next summer, we can just take a bus and go watch the Redskins. So thank you all. Okay, at this time, yeah, I think so, yeah? I'm surprised nobody said, "Go Skins." All right. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the appointments and reappointments on tonight's agenda? And when your name is called, if you would just stand so we can make sure that you're here, and then you may sit.
Madam President, we have six appointments tonight to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. The six individuals are Robert J. Adams, Regina Chaney, Lee Householder, Joyce Knight, Monique Johnson, and Andrew Nee, Jr.
Thank you, and thank you for all of you who are willing to serve on this commission. You may be seated now. After the papers are adopted, please meet the Assistant City Clerk at the rear of the chamber on my left, and she will direct you from there and administer the oath of office. Are there persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of any of these appointments? In opposition? Back to council for discussion. Call the question, please, Mr. Clerk.
Council's voting on tonight's appointments. Mr. Connors?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye, except number 29, where I'll abstain.
Madam Vice President, Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Madam President, Graciano?
Aye.
Thank you. The papers have been adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, would you please call for the list of the presenters for the awards and presentation period?
Yes. We have a public service award going to Mr. Walter Bruce Bullington. The Honorable Dwight C. Jones, Mayor of Richmond, and honorable members of city council do hereby unite in solidarity and common purpose to officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Walter Bruce Bullington for his more than 39 years of public government services on behalf of Richmond residents. Joining the Richmond Department of Police Division of Emergency Communications on January 6, 1973, Mr. Bullington retired on March 1, 2012, as a supervisor in that division, a position he served for 27 years. To date, the length of his tenure service is the longest on record of any member of Richmond Department of Police Division of Emergency Communication. Responding to hundreds of emergency 911 calls a day, Richmond professional communication officers provide intake, assessment, crisis management, dispatch, and support on behalf of the Richmond Department of Police, Richmond Department of Fire and Emergency Services, and Richmond Ambulance Authority, and other government departments as needed. Over the years, Mr. Bullington managed thousands of emergency calls on behalf of Richmond residents in need, and was respected for his fellow first responders, for his innate abilities in expertly managing crisis situations and providing the information directly, support, and resources needed to respond effectively. Due to his dedicated service, Mr. Bullington was considered to be a trusted friend and integral part, brother, and member of the police, fire, and emergency service family. As testament to his outstanding service and commitment to Richmond citizens and the first responder community, Mr. Bullington earned numerous commendations and awards over the years, which includes the Richmond Department of Police Life Saving Bar and Meritorious Police Duty Medal. Known for his professionalism and expertise, Mr. Bullington exemplifies one that has helped the Richmond Police Department, Richmond Department of Fire and Emergency Services, and Richmond Ambulance Authority earn well-deserved reputations of their dedication to our community. In America, public government service is considered to be among the most notable and important work that a person can do, and through his actions, Mr. Bullington has proven his dedication to and support of the principles and creed written into the founding documents of our great nation, and that our individual destinies and that- great nation, and that our individual destinies and that of our families, communities, cities, state, and country include not only the aspirations of our federal constitutional republic, but the support of all its citizens in realizing the fulfillment of its promises. Now therefore, Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones do hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Walter Bulletin for his more than 39 years of public government service working for the Richmond Department of Police Division of Emergency Communication on behalf of Richmond residents, and bestowed the Richmond Public Service Award on him in appreciation of his work that has helped to make our city an even better and safer place to live, work, love, learn, play, visit, and raise a family.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Bulletin, I don't even know what to say. You started in 1973, no cell phones, not a lot of computers, you know, somebody's gotta run and put the money in the phone and call and say, "Hey, somebody just dropped on the road," to today where somebody can get to you in two minutes. Plus, what a stressful job. I mean, to me, you who answered those 911 calls and tried to figure out where they're gonna go and how to, you help citizens to remain calm and to stay cool and collected, although I'm sure you're not successful every time you get one of those calls. You are, you just do such a wonderful job for our citizens, and I don't see how you lasted 40 years, honestly.
Love of the job.
Honestly, it's so stressful. I'm sure you do, but I mean, I just would think that that would be a very difficult job to have for 40 years. Thank you for your service and all that you have done for the city.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Kathy, you said it all.
Yes, she did.
Yes, she did. I tell you, Bruce, I know that so many times I've called 911, not only for myself, but also for the citizens, and every time you've entered the phone, you've always been so nice, so calm, so collective, and I know, I know one time you told me, "Reva, just calm down, calm down." Because I know that, like I said, your job is very, was very, very stressful, and no computers, no this, no that, and 39 years of being there. And I know that you're an icon, and I know that you've probably been a mentor to so many of those people that didn't have that place. You know, 911, I mean, what would we do if we didn't have 911 operators and people such as you that took your time to always, you know, keep calm and just listen and give advice and probably, I know you have so many stories you could tell us, you know, what you had to do and how the outcome and all that was, but again, thank you for 39 years of service and for all that you have done for our city of Richmond. And could your family and friends please stand, or would they like to come down? Come on, Keith, Big Bird, y'all stand up. That's wonderful. That is wonderful. That is wonderful. God bless you. God bless you always.
Thank you, Reva. Thank you so much. This job's really been a lot of fun over the last almost 40 years. We have a very real possibility of making a difference in somebody's life when they call 911, and based on the actions that we do on the telephone can have a distinct difference right on down the line. The Fire Department, I thank Keith Andy so much for what he did to have me here tonight. We've got a great management staff in the DEC, the Division of Emergency Communications. We've got a great training staff. We've got the best communications officers you could ever ask for. And I, excuse me, I just enjoyed working with them for as long as I did, and I just hope they continue doing the great job that I know they're capable of. And go Redskins!
You wore your Redskins shirt.
Yes, ma'am. I did, I did. Thank you so much. I appreciate everything, okay? Thank you.
Especially thank you to Chief Lewis, who came tonight, our Fire Chief, past Fire Chief. We want to thank you for coming too.
Thank you. The work that is done to keep citizens safe starts at the telephone and ends with fire and police. And in between is the work that is done by these gentlemen and ladies, and we couldn't have done it without them, so I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Good pleasure.
Madam Vice President? Madam Vice President?
Excuse me, Mr. Jewell.
It's so good to see Chief here. I thought that looked like him, I wasn't sure. It's quite an honor for Mr. Bulletin to have Chief show up. It's been a while. I just, as a member of the Ambulance Society, I want to make the point that everything begins with that man's office, as Chief has just said, but I don't think people fully appreciate the intricacies of their training, that they have to know in the most laser beam way the kinds of questions to ask that caller in order to get the help that they need the quickest. There are a series of questions, we need to first know whether it's a fire emergency, a police emergency, or EMS emergency. From there, they have to determine where they are, how best to get to them, and what their conditions are, the series of questions that are being asked in order to shorten that response time, and response time is everything in this business. And it explains why our EMS and our emergency services generally have been some of the best response times in the country, and we owe you so much for all that you've done these 40 years. Thank you, and God bless you.
Madam President, next we have a proclamation presented to Mr. John Rupp, and it reads as follows: "To further increase public awareness and support families, the medical community, and organizations in helping to fight, prevent, and cure this disease, and to officially proclaim the month of November 2012 as Richmond Pancreatic Council Awareness Month."
I think before we, and thank you for coming, thank you for coming. I think before we proclaim this Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, I'm gonna read a couple of statistics because I think they need to be read. Pancreatic, let's see, there's no known cure for pancreatic cancer. It is the only major cancer with a five-year survival rate in the single digits. Its incidence of disease in the United States of America is highest among African-Americans. Seventy-four percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year, and the losses are devastating. They're devastating your money, they're devastating personally, they're just devastating. And we need to work very diligently to further increase public awareness, support families, and find ways to early, for early detection and to fight this devastating disease. And I just want to thank you all for coming and to proclaim that this is Richmond Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank you people for continuing to carry out this charge. It's always good to have our former attorney as a part of this effort, and your dedication and commitment, and your stand for this when you were here with us every day, you constantly remind us of this. And it was good news today as a part of the announcement as it relates to the Redskins as well, the interest in actually having more emphasis placed on men and their health. And we are hoping that with Redskins being in town, that men will be more proactive as it relates to screenings so that we can identify these things earlier, and perhaps in many cases, prevent them. But we certainly thank you for your leadership and your continued support and continued effort to find a cure, you know? One day, we may, hopefully, we'll be able to stand and say that we achieved that mission. Thank you.
Needless to say, I'm not Mr. John Rupp, I'm Mrs. John Rupp. I happen to be a pancreatic cancer patient, and I'm here tonight to remind you of an old saying, "If at first you don't succeed, try, try, try again." As a member of the Richmond affiliate of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, for the past three years, we've been asked you and other jurisdictions in Virginia, the governor, the Virginia General Assembly, as well as other jurisdictions throughout the county, to proclaim November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. We have done this so that the federal government, the Senate, and the House of Representatives would pass legislation that would require that the National Institute of Health develop a plan to address the diagnosis and treatment of pancreatic cancer. After three years of trying, the House of Representatives finally passed compromised legislation this fall to require such a plan. The House did so by unanimous vote. The Senate will consider this legislation after the election in November. The legislation should pass since at least 59 senators are sponsors of the bill. I'm happy to say that both Virginia senators, and proud to say also, that both senators agreed to be the sponsors. There is still a long way to go to actually get an early diagnosis and treatment of pancreatic cancer, but this is a great start. We want to thank you for your help in this effort, and to let you know that each of the proclamations you have adopted in the past have been sent to the District of Columbia to help in the lobbying efforts of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. We will be back next year, and we will count on more help from you, and we thank you very much for the help that you have given us so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, next we have another proclamation presented to the Richmond Department of Social Services. To support National Adoption Month, Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones do hereby proclaim the month of November 2012 as Richmond Adoption Awareness Month, and call to observance the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Would the representative from Social Services please come forward? Would a representative from the administration please come forward? Going once.
Girl's not here. I'll step up.
Thank you very much. November is National Adoption Month. It started back in the mid-'90s, and as an attorney who works as a guardian litum to help place children and find adoptive homes for them and work through the process to make sure that children have stability, I gotta tell you, November is absolutely the right month for it to be Richmond Adoption Month. Adoption Day in the city falls in November, and November is a time of family, a time of sharing, and it's a time of Thanksgiving. And that's what adoption really is all about. It's about taking children from a temporary existence and placing them in permanence, from chaos and giving them stability. And I gotta tell you, every year when I get to go to the Adoption Day ceremonies down at the Richmond Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, it is an incredible experience to see new families formed. And on behalf of the city of Richmond, on behalf of City Council, thank you all so much for the work that the Department of Social Services is doing to encourage adoption and to make sure that children have that safe place to go each and every night. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. On behalf of my colleague Carolyn Graham and the Director of Social Services, I will definitely pass this on to them. Being an eligibility worker in social services for years myself, I do understand and do appreciate this. Thank you very much.
Madam President, those are all of the awards and presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, could we please have a review of the list of amendments to tonight's agenda?
Okay, tonight's consent agenda, we have item number one, ordinance number 2012-16, continued till November the 26th. Item number two, ordinance 2012-29, continued till November the 12th. Item number three, ordinance number 2012-64, continued till November the 26th. Item number four, ordinance number 2012-141, continued until November the 26th. Item number six, move to the regular agenda. Item number 17, ordinance number 2012-192, continued till November the 26th. Item number 18, ordinance number 2012-193, continued to November the 12th meeting. Item number 19, ordinance number 2012-194, move to the regular agenda. Item number 20, resolution number 2012-R43, continued till November the 26th. On the regular agenda, we have item number 31, continued till November the 26th. That's ordinance number 2012-4, continued till November the 26th. Item number 33, ordinance number 2012-175, is withdrawn. Item number 34, ordinance number 2012-176, withdrawn. Item number 35, ordinance number 2012-188, continued till November the 26th. And item number 36, ordinance number 2012-189, continued till November the 12th.
Does any member of council have any additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Okay, I need a motion. To accept these amendments?
Okay, I need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Mr. Jewell?
So move, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Second? Get a second?
I'd second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, we're voting on the amended agenda. Mr. Connors?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Madam Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Madam President Graziano?
Aye.
Thank you. The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, could we take paper number 62012-177?
Item number six is ordinance number 2012-177 to transfer $2,651,986 from the FY1213 General Fund Budget and $396,000 from the FY1213 Department of Public Utility Stores Internal Services Fund Budget for the purpose of relocating city departments from locations owned by the city along the Boulevard to a location that the city plans to acquire at 1638, 1650, and 1700 Commerce Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any persons, are there any comments from council before we go to the public hearing?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I was not at the informal meeting, and I'm sure you all discussed this.
We did.
But what extent have, how do I phrase it? How far are we towards acquiring this property off Commerce Road, or is it acquired?
We are in the, I'll let, perhaps if we let economic development answer- We are in the, I'll let, perhaps if we let Economic Development answer that. Ms. Farrar?
My name is Jane Farrar with Economic and Community Development, and I apologize, I did not hear the question.
I just want to know, how far are we towards acquiring, actually acquiring the property off of Commerce Road?
The property at Commerce Road has been programmed to determine whether or not the building could be used for our fleet functions, and we've determined that it is suitable. We've done some preliminary assessment of the property, looking at the environmental condition of the property, and we have negotiated a contract with the seller.
And I do remember putting this amount, an amount of money in the budget for this purpose, but I am curious to know how much additional dollars are going to be necessary to retrofit this property, to clear it up, to set it up for business? Do we have any estimates in that regard?
We believe that the fleet portion of the property can be utilized as is. We are evaluating the other aspects of the property for other DPW uses that are currently on the Boulevard at a future date. We would potentially relocate those functions from the Boulevard to this property. We have not done that programming study at this point.
The last question is to transfer funds. This is transferred from the General Fund to...
Question.
To the Utility Stores Fund. Why is that necessary when I thought we budgeted for this purpose in the General Fund?
Yes, I'm going to ask my colleagues from Finance to join me.
Madam President, members of council, Wayne Lassiter, interim Finance Director. Mr. Jewell, the intent here is we're taking some funds that are in the General Fund, some of those being in particular, or those exact in particular, money from the Mill and Rhodes Project that came back to us from Richmond Redevelopment, and the amount of $2,168 is being proposed to move to this project. At the end of every fiscal year, we go through all of the grants that have been opened and operating to see which ones can be closed. We have identified some, and we checked with the grantor to make certain none of those funds are expected to be returned to them. We identified $383,000 in that piece of money. And then there's an additional $100,000 that we are proposing to move from the operating budget in DPW that was intended for property rental to be moved to CIP. That's a total of $2,651,000. In addition to that, a transfer from utilities of $396,000, and that was calculated as a fleet services vehicles for all five utilities. That's a pro-rata share of what utilities needs to contribute to this project. So those dollars in total, $3,048,000, added to the project that's already in CIP, the $3,375,000, that collective is what's being proposed for this project.
That helps. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Trammell?
Madam President, by them moving there, that's not, that's in the sixth district, right? There's not going to be any, everyone's going to be able to keep their jobs and everything, right? Nobody's going to lose their jobs by doing this.
The property owner is with us this evening, but it's our understanding that that property owner will be relocating his business within the city.
About city employees?
Pardon me?
City employees, they're going to be okay too, right?
Oh, you're talking city employees.
So your question is if we move this facility, will everybody keep their jobs?
Yeah, because of rumors out there that they might not keep their jobs.
We anticipate that everybody will continue to have employment with the city. It's just going to be a relocation from Parker Field to the new property on Commerce Road.
And everyone will keep their jobs?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
All right, is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition to this paper? Anyone to speak in favor? Back to council for discussion. Call the question, Mr. Clerk.
Council is voting on item number six, ordinance number 2012-177. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Vice President Robertson? Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, can we go to paper number 19?
Item number 19 is ordinance number 2012-194 to authorize the CAO to execute a funding agreement between the city and the school board for the purpose of providing funds for the school board to lease property at 2395 Hermitage Road for the use as a storage facility for various functions relocated from facilities at the Boulevard.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council before we open it up for public hearing?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain that a little bit better?
Ms. Farrar?
Can you please repeat the question?
Can you explain, they need that, I guess they need another storage place or something to lease it?
The purpose for the building that we will be leasing on Hermitage Road is to house the procurement functions for Richmond Public Schools. A portion of that function will be to warehouse materials and equipment, computers, that they order for the schools, and those will be stored in a warehouse portion, and then there'll be about 9,000 square feet of office space for the communications folks, as well as the procurement folks.
Just barely.
Mr. Jewell? Are you done, Ms. Trammell?
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Jewell?
The, is this transferring use from the, oh, what's the name of the street? It's not Admiral Street.
The White House?
The what?
Isn't it, is it the White House?
These are relocating Richmond Public Schools' functions from the White House, which is on the Boulevard, to this particular building.
What is the name of that street that schools was using for warehouse on the opposite, on the other side of...
You're referring to Arlington Boulevard.
Arlington, yeah. Is that taken out of commission? Does that remain in place?
Richmond Public Schools still has materials and things stored in that building. However, that building needs a significant amount of repair.
So we would not move anything there for storage, obviously, that makes sense. But I thought we were taking that building out of commission.
Arlington Road has not been surplus by Richmond Public Schools.
While, good afternoon, Byron Marshall. While Richmond Public Schools has not officially surplus the building, they gave us a list of buildings that they planned to surplus over the next two years. That facility is one of them, and as a result of moving into this new warehouse space that we're proposing to lease, this is a lease space, they would actually move the driver's education program from there and begin moving the storage materials out of that spot. So by next year this time, that building would be turned over to us. That's the plan.
While we are leasing, and we will dispose of that building in some way, form, or fashion...
Yes.
Don't we have existing buildings that could be used for storage?
The requirement, the program for this need was about 40,000 square feet, of which about 10,000 square feet of that space would be for office. What makes this requirement unique is the fact that the warehouse portion must be conditioned. They store books, they store computers and other things in this space that requires conditioned air to preserve the integrity of the materials that they're storing in there. And then in addition, the 9,000 square feet of office space to house both the communications folks and procurement exists in this particular building. If you're referring to whether or not we could utilize an existing school, the city doesn't have a property that meets the specific needs of this requirement.
Okay. I'm good. That's a dual use. It's storage and office space use.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I got you.
Ms. Trammell?
Mr. Marshall just said that there's a list of 200 properties that's going to be surplus back to us. Can we have the list? Is that what he just said?
No.
What'd he say? Mr. Marshall, what'd you say?
It must have been some misunderstanding. They're giving us a list of properties that will be surplus. There are probably about six in total, not 200.
Can we get a list of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for clearing that up.
All right, any other questions on this paper?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Farrar. I'm reading this lease here. Would the amount of taxes on this property be included in the lease, it appears to me, such that, I mean, the property is currently on the tax rolls and it's privately owned, and it would seem, the way I'm reading this, the landlord would receive an amount from the school board to pay these taxes. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
The property will stay on the tax roll, and this is a net lease, so the expenses for the building, to include taxes, will be passed back through as an expense to the lease.
So currently, the building's empty?
No.
Okay.
The current owner currently occupies that building.
Would it be fair to say that, let's just use a round number here, they're paying $10,000 in taxes now, that same $10,000 will be paid by the new LSC, being the school board? Is that, am I not reading that correctly?
This paper is a funding agreement that sets forth the terms upon which the city will be paying, will be assuming, the financial obligations of the lease. So the lease is bound between the owner and Richmond Public Schools, but the city will be responsible for paying the rent.
Okay, but we're also funding the school system. So I guess what I'm saying is, well, one, is this a normal practice when we're leasing a facility to pay the taxes on this, which I think I heard an answer of yes, we would, that the amount appropriated to the school system would then be used to pay the taxes for this facility? Is that, is that an unusual occurrence? And, well, getting back to my first question, is the answer to that question yes, that according to provision 2.7 of the lease, that that would be the case? Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And given that other space that the city leases, can anyone opine as to if that's the arrangement? I get that there are net leases out there in the market place, so I'm saying, is it customary for the city to take on the expense of the lease, excuse me, of the taxes?
Well, for example, the city leases space in the 3600 Building.
Yes.
And that is an office building with a full-service rent, and the full-service rent includes taxes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, is there anyone in the public to speak in opposition to this paper? Anyone to speak in favor of it? Back to council for discussion. Call the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Council is voting on item number 19, ordinance number 2012-194. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I have here paper number 32.
Item 32 is ordinance number 2012-174 to declare a public necessity exists for and authorize the acquisition of 1638, 1650, and 1700 Commerce Road for the purpose of housing the Department of Public Works Division of Fleet Management.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council before we open it up to public comment? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this paper? Anyone here to speak in favor of this paper? Back to council for discussion. Call the question.
It would help.
Sorry, Mr. Jewell?
An explanation of the difference between this paper and the earlier paper might help.
This paper is to authorize the acquisition of the property. The other paper was the financing. This is the purchasing.
All right, that's all I need. The public needs to know.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Any other questions? All right, call the question, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on item number 32, ordinance number 2012-174. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe there are no papers to amend and continue at this time?
That is correct.
All right, at this time, we'll go to citizen comment period.
Okay, the first speaker tonight, Madam President, is Chris Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
My name is Chris Dorsey. I'm going to start out by talking about this document showing to the people and showing to media as I see Robert Zullo walking off. This is the United States Constitution. This is the law of the land, and what we have in this body and in every other body that is represented by the current United States government is a treasonous and unconstitutional entity that is controlled by a central banking cartel that represents itself in this country by something called the Federal Reserve Bank, which is a privately-owned central bank that controls and operates everything this government does, even down to people on the Economic Development Authority who pull the puppet strings on you guys up here. So we'll start off with Article I, Section 8 of the Constitution, which is the enumerated powers of Congress. That is the closest to the people in our representative republic, and it states in Article I, Section 8, that the Congress has the duty to control the economy of the United States. And it says that in a number of different places in clauses 1 through 7. Then it goes on to state that the enforcement arm of the money interest is controlled by the same body, which is the closest to the people in our representative republic, and that states the Congress declares war and controls all actions of the United States military. Now, what we have in evidence in Congress is the Chairman of the Federal Reserve Bank, Ben Bernanke, telling the United States Congress it is the Federal Reserve Bank that controls and is the overseer of the US economy, and we have the so-called Defense Secretary, Leon Panetta, former head of the Central Intelligence Agency, which is not the intelligence arm of the US government, is the intelligence arm of the private central banking cartel. arm of the private central banking cartel that we're talking about, states that it is the United Nations and NATO which control the actions of the United States military. That is treason. It's been evidenced for many people to see in Congress, on television, on C-SPAN, et cetera, on CNN, whatever the other, you know, corporately-owned media outlets are. So, what do we do about this? And what do we have coming up? We have a fraudulent election. You all know about the fraudulent election in the City of Richmond. Mr. Alan Jackson, he's complicit in these crimes, and so are you all, because there has been a concerted effort from the Registrar's Office, the State Board of Elections, and the Richmond Electoral Board to subvert this process of elections, which result in, you know, nothing but fraud, no matter which CIA actor or which controlled opposition candidate gets into the office. And we have a federal court case, Shirley Harvey and I, and others, showing the overwhelming evidence that's already been ruled on by three different judges, that this upcoming election in the City of Richmond is a fraud.
Thank you.
But it goes further than that. Our entire electoral system is a fraud. All one has to do is read the corporate mainstream media.
Mr. Dorsey, excuse me, your time is up.
Okay, well, thank you. And I'll close with this, because I'm solutions-oriented. And I've been talking to members of the military and former members of the military. It is time to enforce the Constitution, and it is time, and members of the Police Department like Captain William Smith, it is time to arrest the leaders of the institutions that control the illegitimate United States government. Thank you very much. That's the only solution.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bishop Arthur West.
You know, one of the swashbucklers said, "I'll be back."
I know. We thought you were gone.
To the City Council.
You're here.
I'm so sorry. To the City Council, "It's good to be back," by demand of the kids.
Welcome.
I got so many calls in North Carolina, "Please come back."
Welcome.
I had to come because of the children. Dr. Robertson has seen eye to eye these kids when awards and things, she's been there when they present her an award. Two kids on the end had a chance, if you look up to Dallas, and don't be afraid, to go to Ground Zero in New York City because of this program. And for the first time, give a helmet to the fire department up there. These kids never got a chance to leave their projects in the area and do anything like this before, but now this program, they did. The only thing funny happened was when they got back to Richmond, they asked me a question. Said, "Coach, where are all our taxi cabs?" And that was the experience for them. Then, they were invited to the Republican Party's Assembly, you know, Assembly, where they sat down with Governor McDonnell's wife, and they had lunch at Hugo, and they got a chance to get a tour of the Confederate and Civil War stuff they'd never seen before, and went back to John Marshall High School and wrote essays and things on it, and was able to get grades behind it. Why? Because when Marty came to me years ago, and when Chief Monroe and Officer Dixon came and seen what I was doing out in the county with the city kids, they wanted me to come to the city and do it, because I was taking over 100 kids from the city out to a gymnasium in the county, because there was no problem in playing in the city. Mr. Jewell evidently worked hard to get the old Armstrong Building opened up. But when I went in there to work for parking regulation, I was told that I could not enforce the parents-up policy, which have a parents-up policy. I want young men to learn how to be young men, put in the world and get a job. Since I've been back, we've had parents that show up for the first time. I get they miss me, too, because parents now are bringing their kids over to a facility that we're also using, Mr. President, Madam President, way out in the county. We still can have parents drive their kids way out in the county to use a gym, because there's nowhere else for them to use, because there's no money. But thank God, we got favor with the people out there in the church, who let us use it for free on Tuesday night. Armstrong Building closed because I couldn't enforce my policy. I still believe a kid needs to get his grades up and his pants up, and I fight it every step of the way. And I'm criticized for being a piece of work, but I am. But I thank this council for the ones who have tried to support me, Ms. Tyler, and Mr. Jewell. And Mr. Connor, I think I'm about in your district now. I remember years ago when my kids put on your T-shirts and marched the street with you. I was able to get them to do that. Now, here's some flowers I'm passing out to you tonight. That's about the program we have in Saturday afternoon. Did you see it all? Let me get these. I've had to network with another program called People's Better, okay, People's Better Business. Okay, People's Better Business, because what it is, is I cannot keep handling all this financial money. So, People's Better Business is an incorporation who got in with me and networked, where they can handle the finance for me and the kids. And we need basketball right now. We have a gym, we don't pay anything to use it. With the Connor, we're in need of eight basketballs. I know it's eight City Councilmen here. We're in need of a first-aid kit, because they won't let us go in the gym anymore unless we have a first-aid kit.
Time is up. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna say this, ma'am. We just needed some basketball first-aid kit. I don't know what we got so against these kids, but I'm gonna still fight for them, and I am back. And the election is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're glad to have you back. Thank you for all the good work you do.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Reverend West?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Bring the children up here. Bring the young men up here. Bring the children up here.
Come on, ma'am.
Yeah. I'd like to thank you for all that you do, because, and I'm glad you're back. I'm glad you're back. Because when you were speaking, by the look on their faces, you could tell that they, you're their mentor, and so many other young men that you have brought up here. And, I mean, I can tell that you changed their lives. You make a difference in their lives. I don't know what school they go to. I don't know where they live, but I can tell that they have a lot of respect for you. And thank you for what you do. Thank you. And thank you all. Thank you all for listening.
Reverend West?
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Did you say these young men are from?
Southside.
Southside. Where? What part?
Midlothian, Hillside Court area, Georgewood area, and way out on, uh...
That's close enough. You hit the ball out of the park, Doc.
They have 15 from Northside, too, but they're not here tonight.
I have complained, we have complained incessantly about the absence of recreational services in the largest hole I've ever seen in my life, virtually from Forest Hill, south to Hull Street, south to Chippenhams, south, south, all the way down to Route 1, south, all the way out to Chesterfield, no recreational services for teenagers. It's an abomination. Nobody seems to be urgent about fixing this problem. I've got in Midlothian Village, 200 units, 75 teenagers, nothing to do. No basketball court, even on the premises. You'd think they could walk across the street and get a pickup game at Georgewith outside. The basketball poles are cut down to the asphalt, not even a outdoor court. That's no way to treat children. And that minimum we can do is help this man who, I've seen his work, I've seen his magic, I won't even call it work. It's magic, what he's done. At one time, with 50 to 75 kids, many of them beefing with each other from different developments, they don't even mix. But they will come together and play as a team in ways you've never seen before. And when you take them home, yes, because you had to take them home, you were using a gymnasium on the Zaya Avenue, Mr. Hilbert, having to pay rent $120 an hour for the kids to play out there. That's outrageous. I believe that recreation ought to be as free to children as law enforcement is to the rest of us. In fact, the more we provide recreation for children, the less law enforcement we should need. We got it backwards. I'm saying this to this administration, that we gotta step up our game.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
You, I'm not done. You can't continue to take taxes from everybody, but only provide services to two-thirds of the city, and think nothing's wrong with not providing services for the other third.
Mr. Jewell, these kids got together, 25 of them last year, and went down to Hillside Court with Chief Norwood, and picked up paper in the house and thought it was him.
I know they did.
Showed they went down there in their uniform tops and picked up trash at Hillside Court to show they were willing to work along with the police department. And Chief Norwood picked up paper with those kids. They felt so good, it's working with the police chief who cared about them.
I'm certain.
And Chief Norwood does care about them.
Dr. Merrifield is in the back. He's been out with me to see that area. Mr. Connor had a lady call me from, what is it, Blue Ridge Apartment Complexes recently? They're in the city off Coronation Road. They've got no youth services out there. They're clamoring for help. We gotta fix this. This budget is coming up, and I'm urged, I'm just making a note for all of us to know that we need to fix this problem this budget year.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell, and thank you, Bishop West. We appreciate it, and congratulations, young men.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to say something, too. You know, we have a lot of newspapers in the City of Richmond, a lot of magazines, a lot of radio stations. It seems like they would come out and help citizens like Bishop West and others. There are so many others that come out to take care of the children, help with the children, but when they need a helping hand or need some funds, nobody's there to help them. And, like we've said, they make a difference in these children's lives. So, I think more people need to get involved and help.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Al Shirley Harvey.
She's not here. She's not coming.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Marie Morton Hart.
Good afternoon, Madam President, and Vice President and Counsel. My name is Marie Hart. I live in the Dearborn section of the City of Richmond. I have two trees in my front yard. I've been in that house for 37 years, or maybe 39 years, and those trees are continuing to grow. I have called through the years for them to come and do something to those trees. I've had six or seven people to come. The last one was Norma Brown. They telling me that the trees are good. They not good to me, because I am 75 years old. I have to rake those leaves that fall off those trees. And I told the lady that I talked to, and Mr. Brown, "I hope a storm come, the lightning hit them and knock them down to the street, and then you will have to come and get them out of there." Now, what are y'all gonna do about these trees? And not only that, but I have tree stumps in my yard that I have to put solar lights to keep people from visiting me, from falling over those great big roots in my yard. And one man came out, and he said, he gave me a paper, in case anyone hurt himself, to file it and turn it into the city attorney. Now, I wish you all would come out there and get rid of those trees, those on the front, but I got eleven in the backyard that's not yours, but I want you to take yours out of my front yard. And they're right near the curb. You get out the car, there's a cement thing there, and then there's those roots.
And there is, there is a lady back there, Lila Jefferson, from the mayor's office, Ms. Hart, and she can help you.
I hope she will, because I'm sick and tired of her.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, you know, I'm glad that Ms. Hart's come here tonight to bring this to our attention, because it's not, I mean, it's all over, not only in the 8th District, but all over the city, where these trees are city trees, they're uprooting the sidewalks, they're up, it's called a carriage walk and all that. But she is 100% right. When you go in her front yard, it's like from the trees, it's got like big, like the roots, that it's, like, if you don't watch where you're going, you're gonna fall and stumble over them. And as she said, she's 75, and she has other seniors that come visit her, and it's not right to give her a piece of paper and tell her that if somebody falls and get hurt, write it up and turn it into, I guess, Mr. City Attorney, who's probably got a lot of stuff on his desk right now, but anyway, that's not right. If the tree needs to come down or whatever, we need to take the tree down.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trammell. I think that Ms. Jefferson can help her with the problem, if we can take it down. You know, I don't know anything about this problem, but we will let Ms. Jefferson look at it.
I know, Catherine. What I'm trying to say, who knows best? I mean, we don't want to go through the other thing where the tree went through the man's house that screamed and hollered over and over that the tree was gonna fall, and it did fall, and now we're in lawsuits with that. I mean, suppose she falls and, you know, breaks her hip or kills herself or her head or whatever. She's come here tonight to ask us for help, and I know others have been asking on these citizens' request sheets to have these trees trimmed or whatever, because they're city trees that's grown over onto their property, that's messing up their yards, their porches, their sidewalks, and all of that. That's what I'm saying. It's not right that we go out there and just say, "Well, we'll come back, or we'll call you later," and get fixed.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't know the situation of this tree. Trees are an issue, whether you want the trees down or you don't want anybody to touch the tree. I'm just saying, trees are an issue, and that's why I sent it to the mayor.
But it shouldn't take a act of Congress to get it taken down if the citizens that live there and pay the taxes and all that want the tree to come down. Take it down, and she's the only one's got the tree there.
Okay, next speaker, Mr. Clark.
The next speaker is Donald Hatcher.
My name is Donald Hatcher, and the older I get, the worse the City of Richmond get. It's sad. I'm 72. I came up where if you was black or anything else, you wasn't allowed in the restaurants, you had to go around the back. We had separate schools. It ain't no different today. We got separate schools. Ninety-seven percent of the school population is black. Where do the white kids go to school at? Where's the problems in this city? People with trees. All kinds of mess going on in this city, the crime, and you walk through some of the neighborhoods. You gotta be strong to walk through them. Need a baseball bat or something in your hand. Don't nobody see nothing. The businesses, when you walk on the main drags, the sidewalks are dirty, the streets are dirty. The payment is up to the curb. You can't see the curb. What is going on in the City of Richmond? That we keep taxing people, and we got all the problems we got in this city, and they don't get no better. Nobody's addressing anything. It's sad. I don't have the answer. I can sit in my house and hear gunfire going off. I can sit on my porch and all I hear is cussing and cursing on. It just, where do you go? How do you deal with this mess? If it not been raised to be around this foolishness, and nobody sees anything, nobody wants to do anything. And the game with blacks and whites in this city have gotten worse. I thought we was making progress. We ain't making no progress. We're going backwards. We got some of the most evil white folks I ever heard of in this city, who does things that are devious, dropping trees on your house. I got a white neighbor that bought the house next door. He come down and drop a tree on my house. The city come and tell me I gotta move it. What kind of laws do we have that there's no protection for citizens, but you carry me to court? I gotta go to court. I gotta move a tree that a man drops on my house on purpose. And he's down here at City Hall complaining about my property, and the City of Richmond don't see fit to do anything about all the stuff he have done without permits. I don't understand it. I'm glad... I'm glad I'm at seventy-two, and maybe I won't live long enough to do some things that I don't want to do. It's sad. I done served this country. I done worked hard. I done raised five kids. And I'm looking at situations in Richmond that haven't gotten any better in seventy-two years. Nobody sees anything. How can you walk down the streets in the city of Richmond and sidewalks are dirty and filthy? Trash in the alleys. Alleys erosion away. Poles on the street need to be replaced. Nobody doing nothing. I, I don't understand it. Maybe somebody can, can, can tell me if I'm completely crazy or what's going on in this city. Nobody sees anything, especially in the black neighborhoods. You can't walk down a sidewalk without filth and trash. Something gotta be done. How are you gonna deal with it? What are you gonna do about it? Why do people have to be so fearful they can't even walk out their house in the dark? What, what's going on in this city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Mr. Jewel.
I, I, I really need to address his, his complaint. I actually went out and saw for myself this tree whose stump is in the neighbor's yard, blew down during the hurricane over on Mr. Hatcher's house and into his yard across the fence. He's taken to criminal court for failure to remove a tree out of someone else's yard. There's gotta be something wrong with our law. Because I took the building commissioner and Mr. Item, uh, the manager of inspections, and they saw what I saw, yet they're saying that there's nothing we can do about it. Mr. Hatcher cited for a fallen tree that doesn't belong to him. And he's responsible for cutting it up. Big tree too. I don't know any other tree. And it clipped part of his home. Well, uh, we're gonna have to, Mr. Jackson, help me visit that law and see whether or not something needs to be adjusted here, 'cause this makes no sense. And there are indications that that tree had been cut, somewhat wounded, before the storm blew it down. Uh, it's, it's amazing to me that we'd have a law on the books that doesn't provide any more protection than that. Uh, and so I'm gonna urge my colleagues to, uh, listen up as we see if we can't fix this law. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jewel.
White man is living back in the years long ago.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Angela Baskerville.
Good evening. My name is Angela Baskerville. I'm calling regards to, um, I'm here in regards to my daughter, which is working so she can be with me. Seventeen years old. Been trying to do her best, get through school, graduate this year, and just doing all that she can. Um, she was with my mom for a year because of my health. I've had twenty strokes. And she cried to come back home. Mom, please, I'm gonna come home. I let her come home. We went back to John Marshall High School. I've been fighting, dealing with the principal there, Ms. Britt, since oh-nine, basically, when she left. My daughter left there to go to Chesterfield, to Manchester High School. Upon their leaving, um, she has some charges with Ms. Britt and some of the security officers there, which I've been trying to get since oh-nine, even putting letters on the Chief Norwood's car and everything else. Like, can I get to this man for nothing to talk to him about incidents that has happened with my daughter? She has charges on her that she should not have because of other things that she have been dealing with for John Marshall. We had altercation on October the second. School started September the fourth. Detention has been begging and begging for them to please put her into the PLC program. I've been fighting before school started for that. Nobody's there. We gotta wait till they get to school. They get to school, we wait. I said, "Look, my daughter's begging." Cause I found a young man that she dealt with for a couple of years. They have not been together. So another young lady is there. So now this young lady has been saying things to my daughter. My daughter has been avoiding this young lady. I've been calling Dr. Carey. I've called and spoke with the chairman of the school board. I've been begging for her to have a school board to go before the school board team in regards to Ms. Britt. She has no care, no nothing in regards to my daughter. When she came back, the first thing she called me was, "She can't go here because she's not in the right district." I said, "We live on 506 Brooklyn Park Boulevard, Rich, Virginia 23222. So tell me why this is not her school zone." Um, very, very frustrating. It's very, very nerve-wracking. Well, now she's at Adult Learning Center. She just started that last week, trying to get through that. Also, once she graduated with GED program, she's already told Ms. Christian, the counselor there, that she wants to be a nurse, a CNA nurse. So she's gonna start there. She has her life planned for her. But for the school board, not the school board, the school system rather, and that particular principal, to continue to knock her down, knock her down, knock her down, I don't believe that's fair. My question is, and my ask for you all is, where do I go? Who do I go to? What do I do for my daughter before they really just destroy her life, basically, for nothing? For nothing, because your young lady speaks out. Dr. Carey would tell you, this young lady speaks out. She tell you the truth. And they stated to her that she just tell, she's too honest. Sometimes it's not good to be honest. That's not what she was taught. I taught her, my mom, my grandmother, them taught me, always be honest, and take the consequences, whether it's good or bad. And I've always been there for her, and all my, I have four kids. Whenever it takes, I'm there. I don't care if it's right or wrong. And I will correct them and tell them what they need to do right. And we will fight together. Our twenty-three-year-old is incarcerated now, and we are fighting together. He dealing with health issues. Thank you.
I'm not sure that Ms. Jefferson from the mayor's office can help you, but she can get you to someone in the school system who might be able to assist you with this.
Okay, thank you.
Can you, Ms. Jefferson, could you come down here to her? Thanks. Thank you. I'm sorry for your troubles.
Okay, the next speaker is Craig West.
Good evening. My name is Craig West, and I reside in District One. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here tonight to speak on concessions that have been made for a construction project, ironically enough, that's located in Henrico County, known as Monument Square. This project has created an eyesore and a public safety issue for Richmond residents living adjacent to the site for four to five years. The property, the property located directly across from my home was in need of egress and degress for construction vehicles entering and leaving the property. The solution, a cut was made in the right-of-way, the median separating north and southbound lanes of Willalaw Drive, to allow literally hundreds of excavators, dump trucks, and other construction vehicles to turn left off of With Street and head north on Willalaw Drive. Not taking into consideration, this thoroughfare was not designed to handle the amount or the actual weight of the traffic now using this intersection. My fear is that the end result will render our, our street virtually impassable, resembling the corridor of Patterson Avenue between Westmoreland and Willalaw, the intersection of Willalaw Drive. This adjustment to the median was made without any public proposal and without the approval of residents to which this alteration directly impacts, directly resulting in traffic pattern and public safety issues. Motors routinely ignore no-U-turn signage because of the proximity of the easement to the side street of Bromley Lane, and people have taken to turning south in the northbound lane, right through the median, and then left down southbound, Willalaw Drive. Also, the increased traffic and heavy equipment is a danger to the children of our neighborhood, whose bus stop is located just south of this intersection, not to mention the constant flow of joggers, dog walkers, and other pedestrians that use Willalaw for recreation. I'm proposing that our median be returned to its original condition and to have the city's engineers properly review and plan this intersection so as not to have every truck, car, using With Street to access northbound Willalaw and headed in the direction of my front yard through this cut in the median. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Teddy Param.
I want to say good evening, and I hope a lot of you all will not be here soon. There are some terrible things going on in the city of Richmond. Number one, what Mr. Dorsey was saying, the local election is null and void. There is a lot of corruption going on. And I'm running for the Sixth District. I am Theodore Param, and I'm gonna get more votes than you think. In my ballots, um, I found eight names of people, and I'm gonna call them off to Queesha Childs, Robin Baskerville, James Carter, Margaret Johnson, Lois Johnson, Jetta Goodnight, Esther Milner. I'm calling these people names off because these people are legally registered to vote, and the registrar's office said that they were felons.
Ms. Parm, you may not come up here and campaign. You may come up here for citizens.
It's not about campaigning. It's about these people having the right to vote, and the registrar's office says these people are eligible to vote, and you all are not gonna stop them because they are legal. The next thing I want to say is, you all eat real good up here. Well, the people are poor. We, the people for Teddy Param, feel like you need to start bringing your own meals. From now on, we expect you to bring bag lunches. Number three, we're asking you to take the prayer out of this council because your friends with the nonprofit organizations have taken advantage of the program. I want the agent for the Secret Service, the agent for the FBI, the agent for the Internal Revenue to know that we have evidence, we have a lot of evidence. You all sent the, Byron Marshall sent the cameraman out, the only man with the camera besides these guys. But that's the same dirty thing you did when I went to that Democratic meeting for Reva Tramble. Some of you all talked to, let these people in the office with Dwight Jones. A hundred dirty people talked to Reva Tramble, our councilperson, like she was a darn doll. And they dogma-ed it out, and the way they talked to Reva Tramble, they all should go to jail. You hear what I say? And one girl had the nerve to say to me, "I wish you would mention my name." Well, you got your wish. Jackie Boland of RCAP has been committing voter fraud for the last twenty years. Jackie, I want you to know, you got your wish so that people can investigate.
If you're gonna use names.
I need to tell the truth. I found out Ellen Robinson, that you have paid people to turn my house up for a whole year. People have confessed that you paid them to hurt me like that. You don't have to be afraid of me.
You have thirty seconds.
I don't bite. You paid people to destroy everything that I've worked for? I dressed down today, I must be beautiful or something. You gotta do all that to hurt me? You scared that the real people will vote me in? Well, guess what, boo? It's gonna happen. You get ready, like I said, at that jail. I hope they build a special suite for some of you all. And Reva, you do good. Marty, you do good. Most of the people do not go out of their area to work. Anybody that calls you all for help, you all come. Keep up the good work. Don't let that girl Dawn pay.
Ms. Parm, your time is up. Ms. Parm, your time is up. Your time is up. Okay, we're gonna go into, do I have to go into recess? We're going into recess.
Don't put your hands on her. Don't put your hands.
We're going into recess.
Don't, don't put your hands.
That's it? Okay, into recess for five minutes.
No.
No.
All right, recess is adjourned and is adjourned and we will go back to the consent agenda. I believe that's all the speakers.
Madam President, those are all of tonight's speakers.
Okay, thank you. So now, could we go to the consent agenda?
Yes. The items on this evening's consent agenda are items number, item number five, ordinance number 2012-166, to declare a public necessity exists and to authorize the acquisition of permanent and temporary easements on 6001 and 6007 Hull Street Road for the purpose of the realignment of Hull Street, Hay, and Derwent Roads. Item number seven, ordinance number 2012-180, and that's to authorize the special use of 349 South Laurel Street for the purpose of permitting a bike shop use on corner lots in the R63 multifamily urban residential district. Item number eight, ordinance number 2012-181, to install road bollards within the public right-of-way along 4813 Monumental Avenue. Item number nine, ordinance number 2012-182, to accept funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the purpose of extending the city's integrated flood observation and warning system. Item number 10, ordinance number 2012-183, to execute an agreement between the city and CSX Transportation for the purpose of obtaining access to railroad property and right-of-way to make repairs to the Manchester Bridge. Item number 11, ordinance number 2012-184, to execute an agreement between the city and VDOT for the development and administration of certain revenue sharing program projects with projects numbers U-000127R98, 0007127R99, and 0005127R00. Item number 12, ordinance number 2012-185, to execute an agreement between the city and VDOT for the purpose and administration of certain revenue sharing program projects with projects numbers U-000127R01, R02, and R07. Item number 13, ordinance number 2012-186, to execute an agreement between the city and VDOT for the development and administration of certain revenue sharing program projects with projects numbers U-000127R03, R04, R05, and R06. Item number 14, ordinance number 2012-187, to execute an agreement between the city and VDOT for the development and administration of certain revenue sharing program projects with projects numbers U-000127R97, R08, and R09. Item number 15, ordinance number 2012-190, to accept funds from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles and to appropriate to the Department of Police for the purpose of conducting traffic safety initiatives in the city. Item number 16, ordinance number 2012-191, to execute an agreement between the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority and the city for the purpose of providing office storage and program space for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities at 1209 Admiral Street. Item number 21, resolution number 2012R130, to support the official designation and the installation of route signage for the East Coast Greenway. Item number 22, resolution number 2012R131, to support the application for an allotment through the Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program to provide maintenance and construction assistance to certain transportation projects. Item number 23, resolution number 2012R132, to express the council's opposition to ballot questions that limit the exercise of power of eminent domain by the Commonwealth, localities, and other governmental organizations, and to encourage all voters to vote no. Item number 24, resolution number 2012R133, to request that the CAO to work with City Council, the Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce, and members of the Richmond community to propose a location for the establishment of a pilot program to assess the potential fiscal impact and efforts and benefits of establishing defense production and support services zones within the city. Madam President, that concludes the reading of this evening's consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone from, you wanted to be for? Mr. Hilbert, did you have a statement you wanted to make on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a resolution in tonight's consent agenda to encourage people to vote no on the constitutional amendment on the ballot in, in November. This is, like a lot of things these days, there are a few things. This is an answer to a problem that doesn't exist. The eminent domain laws in the Commonwealth of Virginia are pretty strict and is an overreaction to a U.S. Supreme Court decision. The General Assembly has decided to put forward to the voters a constitutional amendment. The Constitution of Virginia should not be changed at the drop of a hat, particularly for a problem that doesn't exist. And so, we are asked to vote on this on November the 6th. It'll be the ballot initiative number one and this resolution asks that people vote no on that ballot. The main thing that this does is required compensation for the value of the property, including lost profits, lost access, lost assets, and damage to residual property caused by the taking. This will incur numerous expenses for localities that we currently do not have and that's, that's a real troubling event in that it will raise the cost of all public works projects in the future. There's been no taking of property in recent history for economic development purposes. They have to be for a, and that would be in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We have strict laws now and we don't need an amendment to the Constitution. Further, the Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia Association of Counties have both expressed opposition to this authority. So, I would ask that the voters in the city of Richmond in particular, or excuse, and voters in the Commonwealth as a whole, to reject this constitutional amendment. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Any other comments on the consent agenda at this time?
Question.
I'd like to thank, yes, Mr. Jewell.
Item number seven, 2012-180. Can somebody explain what this paper is about?
Good evening. I'm Nolan Blackwood, the property owner. The purpose of that SEP is a property that I purchased last.
Wait a minute, Sarah, excuse me. We're gonna let somebody from administration talk about that. You can, if you want, you can come back and tell us what a great idea it is, but we're gonna let them.
No, no, now that I know what property it is, I don't, I don't even have to ask. I'm good.
Okay. You did a great job, Sarah.
I didn't recognize that property. Oh, he's good at it now. No, we're straight. Thank you, I'm sorry.
I just get back to Mr. Hilbert's comments on the eminent domain paper or constitutional amendment. I want to thank Mr. Hilbert for putting that in our, introducing a paper that addresses that. Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. It's a very important issue for the voters to know that that would restrict some of our capability for moving forward. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition to any of these papers? Anyone to speak in favor of?
Right here.
Okay, Mr. Hatcher, and I think there's someone else back there too. Mr. Hatcher, you in favor or against?
I'm against everything in this city.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know.
Do you have a particular against at this time?
I want to talk on issue number, item number 22, resolution number 2012R131. I've been a member of the city of Richmond, my name is Donald Hatcher. I've been a member of the city of Richmond for 72 years. I'm a little tired of seeing this city getting money. This item here is talking about getting $10 million from the federal government, talking about to provide maintenance and construction assistance to certain transportation projects. We got one of the loudest bus services in the city of Richmond that I've seen in many years and it hasn't changed because it's all racial. When are we gonna deal with the racial problems in the city of Richmond? How come you got a bus that don't run in white areas because white folks say they don't want blacks riding the bus to go somewhere to steal? What say we got to be stealing? It's a serious problem in this city and we got nine council folks. We got segregated schools in this city. We got all the problems in this city. We got problems in, throughout the city. When you walk through the neighborhoods, sidewalks broken, filth, trash in the alleys. Alleys haven't been cleaned in years. And we keep playing these racial games. We're not even considered American citizens being black in America and we fell for the okie-doke, but I'm an African-American black. I ain't no African-American black, I'm American citizen and I'm tired of foolishness. Why I gotta keep living under this mess? Why we keep taking money that don't benefit the citizens of Richmond, give little services to the citizens of Richmond? In all cases, it don't get no better here in Richmond. Nobody wants to deal with the problem. We got one of the damnedest racial problems in the state of the United States of America and it ain't getting no better. And I'm tired of foolishness. I served this country. Sat on that line waiting knowing that if anything happened, I wouldn't be alive in 12 days. I ain't never forgot it. I've been out of service 50-some years. You got to live under that kind of stuff talking about protecting the people of America and you ain't getting protected. I'm a little sick of this foolishness. I'm an American citizen and an American citizen, I don't want your number, what, 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 are you, African-American, black, or nothing else? I want every right that I'm entitled to. $10 million you got here, it don't spell out how it gonna be spent or nothing else. Got buses, when I was a kid coming up in Richmond 50 years ago, you had a bus you could catch every less than 15 minutes. Now you standing out there an hour and a half to catch a bus. It's nothing but foolishness. Bus don't go here, don't run on Sunday, don't run on Saturday. Why don't somebody in this city wake up? I hate to come down here and keep raising cane. But I need to come down here every day. You ought to have this session every day so I can come down here and raise cane. I'm tired of foolishness. It's unnecessary and the folks that live in this city keep taking it, don't say it, and I'm fine. They can keep quiet all they want, but I'm gonna die talking. And they ought to check me when I die to see if I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to any of these papers? Okay, is there anyone to speak in favor of?
All right, good evening, City Council. My name is Michael Gilbert and tonight I speak before you as the Executive Director of Ride Richmond, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit here in the Richmond area. And I'm speaking specifically to support item seven and item 21. I would like the council to note that I live car-free, so I'll be joining or enjoying the new grounds of the Redskins by biking out there on Lee Street and the Sheros. But specifically to item 21, the East Coast Greenway is a 2,900-mile stretch from Maine to Florida. It's longer than the Appalachian Trail, but essentially the Appalachian Trail for bicyclists. And by you supporting that, not only do you also support Bike Route One coming through the city of Richmond and exercise and fitness, but you also help strengthen Richmond as a healthy city and as a diverse city. And a diverse city offers multiple transit options to its citizens, which the East Coast Greenway encourages. And again, it is a step in the right direction for us towards 2015 and the road world cycling championships. For item seven, I support it because I know Mr. Stevens, who is here tonight, is a great community-oriented fellow who has an excellent bicycle shop business and services many of the men, women, and children throughout the neighborhood and also on, in the neighborhood of Oregon Hill on South Laurel Street. So I ask that you both, or all rather, support this in specific items seven and 21. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of any paper on the consent agenda? Back to council for discussion. Call the question.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Item number 16 has to do with leasing space, as I understand it, along Admiral Street for the purpose of Department of Recreation to house its administrative offices and suspect some storage and what have you. No doubt that they need this. We're sort of playing button, button, who got the button with regards to space here in City Hall. Juggling needs to take place and so, and I understand the director's desire to move his managers and directors, I mean, managers and supervisors under one roof. But we just approved the paper that allows for the leasing of property for schools with essentially tax forgiveness for the landlord. We're talking about leasing this property when the city owns property. We've got the real school. I'm curious to know if anyone, Dr. Marfield, or anyone can tell us whether any consideration was made of using the real school that sits up at Isaiah Avenue, it's been empty for years, it's a solidly built brick building with significant space. We got property sitting totally unproductive, apparently in fairly decent shape. It wasn't closed because of the, the building was decrepit. And I don't know whether the need for square footage matches up with, with that space there. Does anyone can tell us whether that building was even considered before we go into a lease where we already currently are not paying taxes? I mean, paying, paying a lease?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of council. Councilman Jewell, we did review that particular property and toured the property and simply stated it's just too small. We are looking to consolidate all, as many of our operations as we possibly can, the divisions. We have approximately 10 different divisions that are operating throughout the city and that's inefficient in terms of what we could be doing in terms of managing our operations. We're needing probably a minimum of 15,000 square feet to, to, to manage in a, in a much improved environment. The other piece is the storage, which may be just as important and maybe more. The storage needs that we have in operating the number of programs throughout the city. For an example, cultural arts alone, we estimate need maybe 8,000 to 9,000 square feet just for storage, just for storage. So this property, and by the way, it is a sublease from the Housing Authority, fortunately provides us with the most ideal space that the Park and Recreation Department has been able to identify and possibly secure in many, many years. We are just ecstatic with the opportunity to move from a decentralized management operation to a centralized operation in addition to being able to provide adequate storage for our cultural arts, our sports, our park division, our facilities division, and we could go on and on, even, even including some of the needs for cemeteries and so forth. I think oftentimes, just to conclude, I'm gonna pick on cultural arts a little bit. You know, when you go to the movies and you hear about how many thousands and actually millions of dollars they spend on casting a, a movie and producing a movie, I think the next time you hear that, think about us in cultural arts and the programs that we offer throughout this city in terms of the inventory that's necessary, the props, the signs, the costumes. All of these things have to be stored somewhere and they have to be stored in a proper, appropriate environment. So this is what we're trying to do. And to my surprise, we were fortunate enough to, to locate a facility that's doing something that I never thought I would see in my tenure here in Richmond, Virginia. It's, it's a really, an opportunity. Our staff is excited and I think the efficiency that it will bring at the management programming level is, is very, very desirable today with what we are trying to move towards for the future. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. The, my biggest concern is...
My biggest concern is that we're living, we're operating in space today that belongs to the city and rent-free, and now we're going into lease and spend a couple hundred thousand dollars or more. But there's no doubt about it, City Dance, for instance, with all of their costumes that they have to use at varying times of the year need to be stored. Well, they had that stuff primarily at the landmark. They got booted out of there with the renovation. There's no doubt that the space is needed for storage. I don't want to take anything from that. I'm just curious to know if we matched up or examined the amount of square feet that we've got in usable city-owned buildings. If you're comfortable that that's been done, then I'll give it a rest.
We did, and I appreciate that, those words. We did. In fact, we did a tour of that particular building, and actually, we were looking at that potentially for assistance that we needed right there at Pine Camp because it's cat-a-corner to that facility.
Right there.
But it's, it would be probably adequate for some level of programming, but certainly not what we're looking at. You have a comprehensive park, recreation, and community facilities organization in this city, and this is an opportunity to facilitate such an operation, probably in the first time in a long time. And we just got a little bit lucky on this one, quite honestly, and I think we all will benefit, all of our districts and our community at large. And it will allow one-stop shopping for our customers and allow us not to have to manage 10 to 12 different operations as opposed to maybe two or three. We can consolidate.
Makes sense. I understand we got folks in your department at 3,200 building. We've got folks that used to be down on Sixth Street.
Exactly.
Down at 17th Street Marketplace, they were housing, some of them sort of scattered all over the place. So bringing them all under one roof makes sense. Providing adequate storage space also makes sense.
And our financials will all be at one location, and that's very important.
And we're paying rent at those other places, I guess we should add, so that it sort of balances out at some point. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
Thank you. Madam President, I'm also looking for the paper having to do with, this is my fault because I should have been here at the earlier meeting. I apologize, but there's a paper having to do with the Redskins accommodating this settling. Is that before us today?
No, that's not before us.
All right. Very good. Thank you much.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda or comments? All right, please call the question.
Council is now voting on a consent agenda which consists of Items Number 5, 7 through 16, and 21 through 24. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I believe we have no expedited resolutions, so we'll go right to the approval of the minutes.
The minutes to be approved for this evening are from Monday, October 8th, informal and formal sessions of council. Mr. Tyler, will you make that motion for the approval of the minutes?
Shall move.
You're now voting on Mr. Tyler's motion to approve the minutes as read. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to reports and announcements. I'm gonna start with Mr. Tyler. Do you have any reports or announcements, Mr. Tyler?
Actually, no, I don't, so I'm gonna pass.
Okay. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that on October 18th last Thursday, Chief Brian Norwood and his officers were over there in Oak Grove area, and I've had many phone calls where the citizens were so grateful and thankful that Chief Norwood took his time to be with them and talk with them and knock on their doors and ask them, you know, what were some of the issues that they had in their community. And like I said, it was, the citizens were very grateful for all his help and for being there and listening to them. So I want to thank the chief and thank all of his officers, his majors, and his staff for being there, walking into Oak Grove and Blackwell area. This right here is your free smoke alarm. Excuse me, please. I'm sorry. Forgot to get it out. If you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, the firefighters will come to your house, and they will install the smoke alarm for you for free. If it needs a battery, they'll put the batteries in it. Right now, in the city of Richmond, this is the only thing free. So please, please, give them a call so that they can come to your home and, or in your apartment, or to your business and give you, and put these free smoke alarms up for you because everyone knows that these smoke alarms do save your life, they can save your home and save your pets. So please give them a call. Again, 646-1526. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Madam President. I simply want to encourage Richmond's citizens to get out to vote on November 6. It's our opportunity to ensure that our voices are heard through our vote, and this is an opportunity to really determine the leadership in our city, in our Commonwealth, and in our nation. So again, November 6. If there are any questions, please give our registrar a call at 646-5950. You can go as early as 6:00 a.m. to cast your vote before you head off to work or other responsibilities, but you have the opportunity to select, elect your council members, your mayor, your school board locally, congressional representatives, and then, of course, the president of these United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jewell?
Thank you, Madam President. Just echoing Ms. Newbill's admonition, I just want to make the point that it is extremely important for us all to get out and vote, and that for those who claim that, well, he's not doing anything for me or us or we or they, or this guy or this lady ain't doing this, that, and the other, politicians are interested people. It ain't always what politicians can do for you. Sometimes it's what a politician can do to you, and we need to wake up and smell the coffee and get out. The other point, though, is that we had a wonderful, wonderful block party put on this past Saturday over near Maymount by the Maymount Civic League. Excellent turnout at a park that I didn't even know was there. Magnificent, Sundial Park. And people enjoyed it so much that they had an opportunity to socialize with folks that they drive past every day and never get to utter a word, folks who live right there in the neighborhood but rarely have time to socialize. I encourage all of our civic leagues to begin looking at the possibility of going back to the old days when we had block clubs, block parties on a regular basis, shut down the street and throw down. It's an opportunity for all of us to begin to get our neighbors, know our neighbors better. It's an opportunity to begin to move us back towards the rebuilding of the village. We keep talking about it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it does, and it did for those of us 40 years old and older. We remember that village. Sadly, those of us 40 years and younger may not, and they have missed considerably. We keep trying to put one program after another program, and this model and that model for improving school and reforming schools when, in fact, the problem, the solution to the problem is really in neighborhoods. Reestablishing a culture where children can be calmed down and prepared and so that they are ready to learn when they get to school. And that's what's broke. The village has been broke for 25 years, and those block parties used to facilitate that kind of a village environment. We gotta go back to it. So I've preached my sermon for the day, and I'm done. Amen. Thank you.
Amen. Mr. Connor?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow evening at 5:00, we have our October district meeting at 5515 Bryce Lane. On that, we will have a report on the Hull Street revitalization study. That's quite interesting. We've been talking about that for a long time. They're gonna give us the latest information on that. We will also have an update on the paving that was done in Fawnbrook subdivision. They put a slurry coat finish on there, and I had some questions about that. So we're having the folks come and tell us about that particular product. In addition to that, we've got an update on our Daytona Drive property. That's the dump that was a prior dump, and we've gotten it pretty well cleaned up, but we're gonna give you a little bit more information on that tomorrow evening. And finally, we will give you an update on the Hull and Durwent project. We're moving that forward, and we will give you some more details. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Mr. Samuels?
I appreciate that. Couple of exciting activities going on in the Second District. First, thanks to everybody that came out either to West Gray Street or to Historic Jackson Ward Association on Saturday, October 20th, this past Saturday, for a cleanup effort. I was over at the Jackson Ward one, and we did a lot of good work. Appreciate everybody that comes out to volunteer their time to keep our city clean. The Robinson Street Association meeting, newly formed Robinson Street Association meetings, November meeting has been canceled, excuse me, October meeting, has been canceled. They will be meeting in November, but tomorrow night's meeting has been canceled. On Wednesday, I am hosting a town hall meeting to discuss some traffic calming options at Monument Avenue and Allen Avenue. It's where the Lee Monument is. Last week, a gentleman walking his two daughters and his wife were, he was hit and severely injured in a car accident there. So we're, we see somewhere between 8 and 18 accidents a year at this intersection, and we're gonna have a meeting at the Orchard House School, which is at 500 North Allen Street, at 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday night to discuss what we can do. Public Works will be there, Traffic Engineering will be there to discuss those issues. For something more exciting, 6:00 a.m. on Friday, October 26th, the Yorktown will dock at intermediate terminal and will set sail shortly thereafter. If you have young children that are willing to be up that early, it ought to be an exciting time for them to see a very big ship on the James River. Thanks so much to everybody for a great meeting tonight. It was quite exciting.
Thank you, Madam President. The Education and Human Services meeting for November would normally fall on the day before Thanksgiving, so we will be changing that date. A tentative date is November 28th, but we will have a final date for you at the next meeting of council, the first meeting in November. Want to remind everyone that even though our theft from vehicles number is down in the north side in the city somewhat, but let's keep this momentum going. Do not leave your car unlocked, and don't leave your GPS, your cell phone, your iPad, your iPod, or any chargers in your vehicle are certainly not within sight of someone walking by. Consider adding some exterior lights or park under a lamp pole if that's available to you. We just need to be mindful of the fact that we are moving in the right direction relative to property crimes, and we want to make sure that we keep it that way, that the police are out looking at more serious crime versus someone being careless and leaving something in their car. So we'll move forward with that, and I'll have a date for you at the next council meeting on the Education and Human Services Committee meeting for November. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam President. Two meetings scheduled for the month of October. One is at the N-Hotty Park Community Center on Thursday, October 25th, which is their standard Fourth Thursday meeting. There'll be a lot of information in regards to the renovation that is taking place there, the schedule for that renovation. Also, on the 31st of October, the city is having a Oktoberfest at the park as well for children up to the age of 12. The Southern Tips Civic Association, which is located on 4th Avenue at the high-rise building, will be having their community meeting on October 30th as well, from 6:00 to 7:00, and that's at 1611 4th Avenue. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. And I just want to thank West River Hills Merchant Association. Last Saturday, they did a big cleanup, cleaned up all around the commercial area, and I want to thank them for their efforts to make our community a better place. I would like to reiterate what some of my fellow councilpeople said. Election Day is coming up. Please get out, no matter who you vote for. Please go and vote. It's an important right, and you need to use it. At this time, can we please have the introduction of new papers? Yes, sir. Mr. Samuels? Oh, okay. Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. Also, Style Magazine gives out 40 under 40 awards every year, the 40 top people in the region who are under 40. It was such a popular issue that I never got my hands on it, but Mr. Samuels did, and so we want to say congratulations to two of our city employees who made the list, Lori Markham and Michael Gilbert. And so, congratulations. Congratulations. This goes to show we have great employees in the city of Richmond. And now, can we have the introduction of new papers? Thank you.
Madam President, new legislation for this evening is as follows. Ordinance Number 2012-195 to amend the pay plan adopted by Ordinance 93-117-159 to include the classification of principal capital projects management in the unclassified service. Council's Governmental Operations Standing Committee, October 25th. Council's public hearing date, November 12th. Ordinance Number 2012-196 to authorize the CAO to accept $10,31,620 from the Federal Transit Administration and to appropriate the increase to the FY1213 capital budget for the purpose of funding capital improvements at Main Street Station. The Planning Commission on November 5th. Council's public hearing date, November 12th. Ordinance Number 2012-197 to authorize the CAO to accept $2,507,906 from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation and to appropriate the increase to the FY1213 capital budget for the purpose of funding the Main Street Station Phase 3 development. Planning Commission, November 5th. Council's public hearing date, November 12th. Ordinance Number 2012-198 to authorize the CAO to execute an amended non-exclusive license agreement between the city and the Megabus Northeast LLC for the purpose of increasing the license fee and extending Megabus Northeast LLC non-exclusive rights to use a certain bus stop, passenger boarding and waiting area at the plaza directly across from Main Street Station. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, November 15th. Council's public hearing date, November 26th. Ordinance Number 2012-199 to amend and re-ordain. Ordinance Number 2012-45-60 for the purpose of appropriating an additional $4,402,955 in state revenues and revenue classified as other revenue. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, November 15th. Council's public hearing date, November 26th. Ordinance Number 2012-200 to authorize a special use of 407 South Cherry Street for the purpose of permitting multifamily use and... and 811 Apple Mall Street for the purpose of establishing a single-family dwelling lot and a lot to be used for surface parking accessory to a multifamily use upon certain terms and conditions. Council's public hearing date, November 12. Ordinance number 2012-201 to amend the city code by adding a new section for the purpose of encouraging the use of green roofs as defined by Virginia Code 1558.1-3852 by providing for the processing of building permit applications within 10 business days and of associated plumbing, electrical, and mechanical permit applications within five business days. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee meeting, November 20th. Council's public hearing date, November 26. Ordinance number 2012-202 to adopt an amendment to the master plan for the city to be known as the Richmond Riverfront Plan. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, November 20th. Council's public hearing date, November 26. Ordinance number 2012-203 to authorize the CAO to execute a master agreement for use of Commonwealth Transportation Funds between the city and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the purpose of utilizing grant proceeds from the department. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, November 20th. Council's public hearing date, November 26. Ordinance number 2012-204 to authorize the CAO to execute a grant agreement between the city and the Federal Transit Administration for the purpose of receiving federal funding in the amount of $10,31,620 to fund the capital improvements at Main Street Station. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, November 20th. Council's public hearing date, November 26. Ordinance number 2012-205 to authorize the CAO to execute a project agreement between the use of Commonwealth Transportation Funds for FY 2013 between the city and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the purpose of receiving a grant of $2,507,906 to fund the rehabilitation and renovation of Main Street Station and associated architectural and engineering services, activities. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, November 20th. Council's public hearing date, November 26. Ordinance number 2012-206 to authorize the CAO to execute a contract modification number one to the Virginia Water Quality Improvement Fund Point Source Grant and Operation and Maintenance Agreement number 4044-S-09-02 for the purpose of increasing the grant amount by $4,456,787 for the Department of Public Utilities Nutrient Reduction Technology Program, modifying the monetary assessment for breach of the agreement and modifying the project schedules required by the agreement. Council's Governmental Operations Standing Committee, October 25th. Council's public hearing date, November 12. Resolution number 2012-R140 to approve the written program outline and budget with project, with projected outcomes for the middle school Renaissance program and to authorize expenditure of $366,000 from the Innovation and Excellence in Education Special Fund to Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation, Inc. Council's Education and Human Services Standing Committee, November 21st. Council's public hearing date... That's not correct. I'll come back to that one. The date's incorrect. Resolution number 2012-R141 to express support for the economic development strategy and package with themes of health, fitness, medicine, and sports involving properties behind the Science Museum of Virginia adjacent to Richmond Community Hospitals and at the former West Hampton School property and participants including the city and the Washington Redskins and Bon Secours Regional Health System. Council's public hearing date, November 12. Resolution number 2012-R140 to approve the written program outline and budget with projected outcomes of the middle school Renaissance program and to authorize expenditure of $366,000 from the Innovation and Excellence in Education Special Fund to Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation, Inc. Council's Education and Human Services Standing Committee, November 21st. Council's public hearing date, November 26. Madam President, that is all of the new legislation that I have for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I adjourn this meeting, if we could go back to number 12, and that is the Riverfront Plan. I believe that is going to... I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. That's going to be heard at the next council meeting? On the 12th?
So that was item number 12 that I read, the 12th item that I read?
Correct. Number 12, to adopt an amendment to the master plan for the city of Richmond. Sorry. You got a lot of paper there.
Concerning the master plan?
Correct. Correct. And that is going, that's going to the November 12th council meeting, correct?
November 12th, yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to check on that. All right. Any other business anyone would like to bring up?
Yes. Mr. Hilbert is the recipient of the award this evening with a time of 8:15. Congratulations, Mr. Hilbert.
Congratulations, Mr. Hilbert. All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned.
It's 15 minutes from the time we started. Got started at 6:05 tonight. Rather interesting meeting, I must say the least. Called order at 6:05, had the appointments. They all passed unanimously. Awards and presentations, docket review, and then about 6:30, we got to the regular agenda. Now, there were two items that were moved from consent to regular agenda, and one item remaining on the regular agenda. So let's go through what happened. Item six, this was moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. It transferred $3,47,986 for the purpose of relocating city departments from locations along the Boulevard. And this is Fleet Operations. And they would be moved to 1638, 1650, and 1700 Commerce Road. That was approved unanimously. Item 19 was a funding agreement between the city and the school board to provide funds to lease property at 2395 Hermitage Road for use as a storage facility for various functions relocated from facilities on the Boulevard. And that passed nine, nothing. And then, item 32, which was on the regular agenda, this authorized the acquisition of the properties on Commerce Road, 1638, 1650, and 1700. That also was approved unanimously. Got the citizens' comment period, very interesting citizens' comment period tonight, if you were watching earlier. And then we got to the consent agenda, which took about half an hour before that was approved. Nine, nothing. Got the reports and announcements, introduction of papers, and then the adjournment. And our next meeting will be actually three weeks from tonight, because there's a fifth Monday in October. So our next meeting will be November 12th. However, before that time, on November 6th, it is election day, and we have election for president. We have it for senators. We have it for House of Representatives. And we have it for the Richmond City Council. So we urge you, as some of our councilmembers have said tonight, to make sure you get out and vote. If you don't get out and vote, and you don't like the results, you have yourself to blame. So as they have said for many years, vote as you please, but please vote. And we'll get back together again in three weeks. We'll know what the makeup of the city council will be. Will there be any changes? Will things remain the same? We'll just find that out in three weeks. So make sure you get out to the polls on November 6th. And we'll see you again on November 12th. For Gavel to Gavel, I'm Dick Harmon. Good night.